We're going to go ahead and call this meeting of the common council executive committee to order Karen, if you can call her.
President Furman.
Present.
Vice President Curry.
Here.
Alder Bennett. Alder Conklin's excused. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Foster's excused. Alder Heck.
Here.
You have quorum.
Excellent. First order of business is approval of minutes. Can somebody make a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Awesome. Karen, you flip a coin, pick one. Any questions, comments, corrections, suggestions on the minutes? Not seeing any unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. Moving along, we've got nobody for public comment item. And so disclosures or recusals, does anybody have any disclosures or recusals required under the city's ethics code? Not seeing any, we'll move on to the items for consideration. I number two on our agenda, seven, six, three, seven, three. Essentially mending Madison ordinance having to do with continuous rotation of agencies and bodies listed on the council agenda. This is a technical correction. This is something that's been in our ordinance, but apparently either hasn't happened for a long time or has never happened. The legislature software does not give the clerk's office the ability to rotate the department order on the agenda. And so it's just been ignored and what was as we were looking at things to clean up, staff asked me to clean this up. So very simply just removes the continuous rotation and keeps the system in place that everybody is probably used to seeing. Are there any questions about this? Go ahead, Vice President Curry.
Sorry, I need to admit, I was distracted a little bit. So you may have said this and I missed it, but would this undo kind of the issue that I had been talking to you about earlier this week of trying to track where certain policy is that hasn't yet made its way to counsel, but has maybe been introduced and making its way through BCCs?
No, no. So this is just the agenda itself. Where where things are. I think the council office has developed a little system on where things are. Because there, there is no easy way of tracking when something gets introduced and where it is and when it's coming back and fantastic, Liz has done a fantastic job of creating her own system and very often finds that thing should have been back on the agenda and aren't and goes ahead, goes ahead and make sure that they're there. But if you ever have questions, I mean, you can look at the legislative history. So if you're looking up an item, you can see where it was referred. But if you're ever curious about the outstanding stuff or anybody is any alder, you certainly can reach out to Liz and she can help you with that.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Liz. I know she's not with us, but God bless you. Another question then, this is kind of just like the banner. So like off report of the clerk's office reported the alcohol. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So you know, DCR, all those different departments were supposed to do some sort of rotation and doesn't happen. And obviously, nobody has noticed.
That's it.
And yeah, and I think, you know, I will say, you know, obviously, this was a rule that was also put in place when we took public comment with the items. And so I think, you know, the order of the agenda is a little less important because we are taking items for public comment earlier. Obviously, it's hard to say that when the clerk's office due till 11:15 last night to answer some questions, but that's a discussion for another time. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And we've happy to have more discussion if anybody wants to have discussion. Otherwise, I will assume approval by unanimous consent and move on to our next agenda item. Which is also very much technical change. It's agenda item three, seven legislative file seven, six, three, seven, seven. It's clarifying that allowable action on the day an item is introduced is a referral. This is a practice that we have done. We but our ordinance does say that we are not to act upon an item when it's introduced unless we suspend the rules. And for a weird reason, it did not actually call out referrals. And so we're allowed to make referrals. Obviously, we've had discussions about referrals and this very simple technical fix, just aligns our ordinance with what our practice has been. I'm attorney Haas at any time. If I misstate something, feel free to unmute yourself and correct me. Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? Unless I see otherwise, I will assume approval by unanimous consent and we'll move on to our next item on our agenda. Which is agenda item four legislative file seven, six, three, seven, nine. Which is an exemption request that we have received from for recording requirements. Some of you all recall, we recently enacted an ordinance change last year that requires all committees to record their their meetings. If they can't do video recording, we have information on how they can do audio recording. What we have found since implementing that, that there are certain committees that this applied to where it just doesn't make sense for those committees to actually have those recordings. And so this, this change specifies those committees, but you know, the, you know, the the requirements, you know, do not apply to staff committees. They don't require, they don't apply to subunits to which the city representatives are appointed, but which are not staffed by city employees. It's very hard for us to have requirements for those, those bodies, subcommittees of any subunit. And then some of our award committees. There is a request to add another category that I want us to talk about here. But are there any questions or thoughts about what is being proposed here? You know, I think the thing that was important to me, I know this is something I talked to Alder Figaro Cole about last year. I mean, you know, it's, it's so important for us to be able to see the deliberations of the committees. And since they're using technology and the technology has gotten easier. We definitely wanted to make sure our committees are recording, but these committees that are being defined here are not, not reporting back to the council. And it's very hard for us to, you know, ask them to record and do something with it. And so I think that's why we have these carve outs. You know, to make it a little bit easier. So any, any, any discussion questions on this? Alder Heck.
Thank you. The, the reference to any subunit that is not staffed by a city, something or other. I guess, does that include? Let's say a subunit that's typically staffed, but let's say there isn't possible for a staff member to be there that day, things like that. I, I, or I guess I'm wondering if occasionally that could cause a burp.
It's an interesting question. I think the intent of this would be that it would be a committee that's not regular, that's not regularly staffed by city staff. I mean, if for some reason I, I would struggle to see us actually have a meeting that would be staffed, like we would never have CCC if Karen wasn't available. You know, we need, you know, we essentially need a city staff member. So it would probably be Debbie or Liz or, you know, somebody or Larissa in the council office that would help us with that. But you know, I think some of the committees to think about that you may be involved in are some of the downtown committees. Or maybe the, you know, the Manona Terrace. I guess the Manona Terrace Board is probably staffed by city staff, but attorney house, do you have other examples that might help me with these, these committees?
Yeah, I mean, and if it helps to clarify, we could. I hadn't thought of that. So no, but we could say something like for which city staff are not assigned to staff or something like that. But there may, I think there are some maybe city, county and city UW joint committees that, that the city staff does not, you know, host those those committees.
Destination Madison will probably be an example. Their board of directors. Do you want? I mean, I, I mean, this is the opportunity. If you want, if you want a language tweak, I think, you know, we, we should think about a language tweak.
I guess my opinion is it would just to be safe. You know, to say something like regularly staffed or whatever, just to be safe and those other committees and make sure those other committees that could function without city staff because even because there might be county staff there to do it, or I don't know, so that we don't get ourselves in in trouble.
Attorney House will think about something while Alder Paulson shares his thoughts or questions. Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
As you say, another committee that's kind of been a weird one is the, the muffin, the Madison Unified Fiber Network. That's quasi city-ish, but I think the EW actually staffs it, but that for a while showed up in Legistar. As a city, as a committee we ran.
Interesting. I don't think we have heard from IT about any concerns about that. Is that, is that a defined city committee in our ordinances?
I don't know. They used to, we used to.
So between Alder Paulson, I think this is my suggestion would between now and the meeting on Tuesday, we can look into that some more if there needs to be a more specific carve out for that. But yes, that is a good point tonight. It's, it's not too hard for us to, you know, do another version at council if necessary. Thank you. Alder Figaro Cole.
So what happens to the committees that record when there is no outside of Zoom? Like I know some parts meetings when we go in person, they have a recording. You know, handheld recorder thing. How does the audio makes it to pop to the public? Do you know?
Karen, do you know what the process is? I know that took a little bit to develop and we delayed, delayed the implementation and get that developed.
For the audio recording?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we, and I haven't actually had a chance to experience it yet. So they have recorders. They load it up to somewhere on media site, but beyond that. I don't know. It's not the same as the video. These recordings are the ones that are have a clear, very, you know, a path to they get put on Legistar, they get put on on media site. The audio recordings, attorney has, do you remember if we have them on? Request? We have them, we have them recorded, but do we have them posted? I can't remember what they decided.
I, I don't believe they're posted anywhere. Well, I, I actually don't know, but I, I'm not aware of where they would be posted.
Yeah. I mean, if they're being put on media site, then they're on the city channel website. And I just don't think it's been done, but we can certainly follow up Alder Figaro Cole and find out more details on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had another request that I wanted to talk about with the common council executive committee. I'm going to share my screen on the language. Attorney House, do you think you may want to give a brief introduction on this request from DCR?
Sure. I had sent out the, the draft ordinance just to the department and division has just to let them know to share with their staff that staff that do staff BCCs and, and the one response I got back was from the several Department of Civil Rights. And they indicated that they had actually talked to me about this in the past. They're concerned that they sometimes have public comments from people where whether it's an agenda item or people offering public comments on their own, where they're maybe sharing some sensitive information about personal experiences that might deal with housing. They also mentioned you know, community members feeling threatened with deportation. And if they speak to anybody about their housing conditions. And dealing with some I guess the tenants right or I think tenant rights, tenant resource center indicated that they had some female clients who were feeling threatened about if they spoke out. And so they were concerned about, I mean, this does happen in public meetings. When they give the public comments, but they were concerned about having those comments recorded. And so I drafted this language as an idea. If the council wanted to exclude those parts of those meetings from the recording requirement. Director Davis and Byron Bishop, who raised a concern, were not available for this meeting. And so they might be able to answer more questions, but that's where this this draft provision came from.
Thank you, Attorney House. I'm I'm going to reserve sharing my, my, my thoughts on this and maybe hopefully have some other people talk first. And share what they think. Alder Heck.
Thanks. I'm wondering if this is the kind of thing where the those types of public comments would have to be extracted from the recording because you don't necessarily know in advance. If such personal experiences would be shared and do we have any precedent for that?
Yeah, I don't think there'd be any, any thought or ability that the IT staff or the media team would have the capacity to go back and edit these meetings. I think that that is a you know, a very slippery, very complicated, you know, process. So I think, you know, I think the thought would be that the you know, the person staffing the committee would, you know, at particular times stop the recording and then hopefully remember to start back up the recording when deliberations were happening. But, but that is, that is a technical concern or logistical concern that certainly is, you know, is, is an issue with, with this, this carve out.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts or opinions on this? Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Speaking of technology, can we do some Zoom magic and somehow kind of anonymize them if they want to testify, especially you know, if it's a virtual meeting, can we blow them out or is there maybe a setting for Zoom that we could blow them out or distract their voice or maybe there's an add on or something we could buy for presume to do that? Do we have that as an option?
We can certainly look at that. I don't think anybody here is aware of anything. You know, you know, the side that can certainly be looked at. I'm sure what we can give that that task and, you know, a little bit of research. Alder Heck.
More thought. I can imagine other BCCs that deal with, let's say, personnel matters could run into this too. Police and Fire Commission or maybe Affirmative Action Committee. Where public comment could drift into what is assumed to be a closed session. You know, somebody could make public comment about something coming up on the police and fire commissions closed session for a meeting where this could also potentially occur. But that would, that would likely be someone. Well, no, that could be an individual's personal experience. It seems there are other possibilities for this kind of a concern. But I have no advice to offer.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Figaro Cole.
In that regard, again, like when we have people that are, that are requested in the past to have their identity. You know, protected for in cases of domestic abuse. So this, this, what you're describing here is not isolated to just this committee. But I think that's just a topic that we should be addressing in general, by having people's addresses on, on you know, available for people to see, like things like that. I think that's a different conversation. Don't you think?
Yeah. I mean, if you want, if you want me to start sharing my opinion, I'm happy to. Alder Figaro Cole.
I mean, I just, well, I'm just thinking that while you guys are describing a privacy issue, but it impacts many other committees, not just these, the ones you guys are talking about, any committee.
A wise alder last night gave an example and, and their comments about the family definition. Discussion that we had about how, you know, people that maybe were violating this law and are, you know, our previous family is definition, wouldn't come to a council meeting and want, you know, want, want the fear of being recorded and outed for violating the law. So yeah, yeah, you know, I think there are a lot of examples where this, you know, we could, we could go into a slippery slope. You know, I think my struggle with this is the, these are public meetings. And so unless we're going into closed session, everything that happens in these meetings for, for better or worse are considered public. You know, I think luckily, you know, I certainly don't want anybody to testify in front of any committee, including the council and be harassed or or have problems because of their testimony. And, you know, I certainly understand that recording makes that a little bit more complicated or a little bit more likely that more people are going to see it. But I do, I do agree that this is probably a much bigger discussion on how to better you know, protect people that are sharing their opinions. I think this, for me, this it's hard, but I don't think this carve out is, 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 is okay at this time.
Yeah. I mean, again, so, so like agree, there's many different topics. I think we should, we should definitely tackle this separately. We had during the people, people that were staying around though, we had people waiting for hours to speak on their phones. There was no place to charge. So people were calling from one phone and we had to make exceptions for them not to have their names out. So I, I think there, the privacy part can be a whole topic that we should discuss separately.
Yeah. Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Any other thoughts or, or on this Vice President Curry?
So thank you. Touching on the point that these are not staffed by city staff meetings and that they deal with providing an award. Just based on my experience for my nonprofit, doing awards, they put together a committee. There's a transparent process, but not everybody is invited in there because obviously depending on different types of awards and focuses, maybe sometimes the list of nominees isn't even made public and you just select a, an awarty. And so I think while I don't think people would naturally be malicious or like with ill intent. Sharing confidential or private information about why someone is choosing to nominate somebody to receive an award or not. To me would be something that I'm, I'd be worried about being recorded. Especially when we tie in like other city rules and quorums and all of that. So I personally think if it's just for these committees, I'd be fine with those not needing to adhere to the requirement. Seems like more of a burden than a benefit. But I do agree with a lot of the comments that have been shared regarding privacy in general with any of our publicly recorded city meetings.
Thank you. Yeah. I mean, I appreciate you articulating a good justification for excluding the award committees, which is hidden here. I will say I was involved in an award committee meeting this year and it was, it was really hard because you were, you were deciding between, we, we were deciding between like three really, really good nominees and we had to have it was a, you know, public meeting and it was only committee members there, but you had to have like, you know, honest conversations. I'm like, well, this person is really good, but this person's a little bit better. And it's, it just felt, you know, gross. We had to pick somebody. But you know, I certainly wouldn't have wanted, you know, those, those people that didn't get the award to, you know, he, hear that. So I, I think that, yeah, that exclusion is good. I'm not hearing anybody wanting to, at this time amend this for, for the, the EOC request. And so I'm, I think I'm, unless somebody makes a motion for that, the only feedback I've heard was and I'll pause my, my thought and let Alder Figaro Cole go.
I think we should send that back to EOC and have them work with us or whoever on expanding the scope of, of the request.
Yeah. I mean, I think my suggestion would be to ask them to take it up on their own. I don't want to delay this right now. You know, I have, which attorney has has let me, I've given the, these committees, the permission to not adhere. I think we've sort of felt like it's been okay to do that. I, I really don't like that idea. I don't like the president, you know, making a decision like that. And so I'd like us to codify this as quickly as possible. So I think, you know, somebody going back to EOC and saying, please talk about this more and think about it from a bigger scope of, of more than just themselves.
Yeah. I mean, I don't say, I'm not saying stop the process. I'm saying we'll move on and then I don't want it. I don't want the discussion to die. And I think that department or that group has, is a good stakeholder to help us get a modification ready for a, at a later time.
Yeah. Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Attorney House.
Thanks. I was just going to add that. You know, I can certainly tell the Civil Rights Department. You know, this, this didn't come from EOC. This came from, from DCR. You know, it wasn't referred to EOC. They haven't taken that up. I can certainly let them know if they want to discuss it with the EOC or provide further, if DCR wants to provide further information to this group or the council, they can. You know, there is other committees that it might apply to like the disability commission as well. Maybe it needs a broader discussion, but I can certainly pass along that message.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Alder Figaro Cole, did you still want to make another point? No, you're good. Okay. Attorney House, did you come up with language that may satisfy Alder Heck?
I have two options. The simple one is just to say subunits to which city representatives are appointed for which are not regularly staffed by city employees. Or we can say but for which city staff are not assigned to host or to staff. Those are I guess two options I came up with.
Alder Heck, be a leader, make a decision.
I guess the first one is clearer to me, even though it's a little bit longer.
Well, the first one's shorter. First one just says which are not regularly staffed.
Yeah, that I think that, that works for me.
Attorney House, do you get paid per word?
I, I think that is probably understandable that people would, you know, understand it. It, it does not apply to just if a staff member is not able to be at the meeting.
All right. So Alder Heck, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we amend the proposed language to include what attorney Haas said.
The first one.
Yeah.
Karen, Karen, do you want attorney house to repeat that?
So I have, so you want to approve, you're moving to approve with the, with the amended language to add not regularly staffed. By, and then into this existing language, right?
And attorney Haas's office will go ahead and upload a substitute which or is it an alternate or is, sorry, another discussion. So we've got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Figaro Cole, who was doing a great job multitasking. Thank you. And any further discussion? Not seeing any, I'm going to assume unanimous consent unless I see otherwise. Outstanding. All right. The last the next item on our agenda, last big, bigger item on our agenda, we've got a few other minor things. Is agenda item five legislative file seven, two, one, 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 Alder onboarding and ongoing training. I left this on the agenda in case there was some sort of update that we wanted to talk about as a group. The biggest update I can tell you is that a letter did go out to all of the candidates in the spring election. Giving them all the dates and information similar to what, what is in legislature. I mean, I think we modified it a little bit and gave a little bit more clarity. Like so, for example, letting every, all the candidates know. And Karen, we should probably also let elders know that they are, that, you know, they, they are welcome at that brunch. You know, outgoing alders. So like, you know, if Alder Heck wasn't on CCC, he may not know that, you know, there's a brunch that he should, he can come to. And he can, you know, bring, bring family or friends or a partner if he wished. So, but that, that gives people kind of the schedule of the most important day, which is April 18th, but then everything else, all the other things that we're doing, round tables and upcoming training, et cetera. So that letter went out. And then, you know, the council office is continuing to work on the training stuff and you know, we'll, we'll start seeing that stuff go live shortly. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
That actually is useful to let us know because I did not know that I was invited to that brunch. So that's, that's helpful. Second, just logistical question for outgoing alders. When does email switch over? I guess I mean, this, I'm just asking now, I mean, I will obviously.
We'll give, we'll give you a better, I mean, we'll give you a better idea of, of that. I mean, I think, you know, you, you are officially, you know, when the new alders are sworn in, technically you're not an alder anymore. Technically, you may not even be an alder on the 18th, but that's, I don't think I'm going to put Haas on the spot to get into a long discussion about that. But you know, I think, I think, I think we will have, there is going to be offboarding process for outgoing alders. There are going to be specific questions that council staff is going to ask of outgoing alders. There are going to be specific questions that council staff is going to ask of outgoing Alders. There are going to be instructions on, you know, even even things such as, you know, here's, here's how you should be deleting the email from your phone, all your devices. And we'll make sure that stuff is in there. And so, you know, well. You you will see some outboarding stuff. And so Karen, we should put that in the note about the eighteenth and just, you know, tell people, hey, you know. If you are, you know, if you are leaving, there will be, and we probably should send that to any any alder that's in a competitive race and any alder that that is not running. And let them know, actually. And then I I guess, I guess the instructions on the brunch need to be sent to all 20 Alders. So all of our existing Alders need to know that they're they're welcome at the brunch. And then, you know, we can include in there that if you're leaving, you know, because you didn't win your election or because you didn't run. There will be offboarding, boarding instructions coming. So that that could be a pretty simple note that will make sure we get out. And that'll be a fun event. I I'm a not, I'm an introvert, but very much remember the brunch in 2019. And enjoyed seeing, you know, people bringing their 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 family and friends and, well, not a ton of friends, but some people brought a friend or two. And just, you know, met met department heads and celebrated a really exciting day. So. Cool. Any other questions about this topic? All right. Then then it's, you know, our next item would be the council office update. Actually, Karen, did we even send that out? Okay, I must have missed that today. I know I saw that last night.
Oh, maybe you're right. I PDFed it.
And then send it out.
And then didn't send it out.
So it's really short. So if we want to just pull it up and talk about it really quickly, I know we're we're. We're running out of time. I know a bunch of people have another commitment very soon, so I'm trying to get people out of here.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's very short. Sorry about that, everyone.
We had just met last week, so there's not a huge update, but. Go ahead.
So, yeah, sorry, I. My brain is working a little slow today. So, yes, hiring update, we have five more days left. So before the position closes, so if you haven't, or if you'd like to push it out some more about the position for legislative analysts, please do. We have a couple of fun project updates. We have the social media pilot underway, so you can take a look at those pages. I'll send this out soon as we get done. And then our common council official Facebook page is now live as well. So you can take a look at that. And then I just reminded folks, there are. A number of trainings that the city puts on that I think would be of interest to Alders. I I highlighted two here about the language line and about conflict management. So that's all we've got for this update.
Karen, Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks, Ken. Maybe you were planning on this, Karen, but I wondered if Larissa could include the council Facebook page in her weekly updates. So that we can post those on our blogs.
Sure, I'll let her know.
Yeah, and she should probably, it's a good opportunity to promote the Twitter account as well. Yeah. Let's get more numbers. Thank you, Alder Heck. All right. Any other questions about the update? All right, not seeing any. I'll move on to our last item of the evening, which is future agenda items. Our next common council executive committee meeting will be our last of the term. Alder Madison has two county related things that she'd like to talk to us about and just get some feedback. I think the logistics more need to be figured out at our with the new term. But that will be on the agenda. There are some referrals that will be on the agenda. And I think you'll likely see, you know, one last update on the onboarding stuff. Just because we're not meeting doesn't mean that you can't continue to give feedback to to leadership and and council staff on all these items that we have talked about. And, you know, look forward to seeing everybody at our next meeting. So I'm happy to, Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks. I wondered if, you know, I'm thinking about our work on BCCs and other things that are kind of lingering. Because and we realized we want to suggest to future CCEs that they. Keep some of those things going. Will we maybe have, maybe at the next meeting, maybe a list of the things that we're going to recommend they keep doing? Or I don't know, just a thought, you may have ideas.
Yeah, we were actually going to have a whole resolution that I need to, I need to go ahead and write tomorrow because I completely forgot about that. So that will be at our next common council executive meeting. We have an outline for it already and I just need to put some text in there and give kind of a handoff of the work that we have done related to that exact thing. So thank you for the reminder, Alder Heck. That is a good topic and we'll make sure that's there.
I should have assumed that you were on top of it.
No, actually it wasn't. You reminded me. So thank you. Any other topics people want to see? All right, I will entertain a motion for adjournment if somebody would like to make it.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Hey, second.
All right. Unless I see any objection, I'm going to assume that unanimous consent and wish everybody good evening. Thanks so much. Bye.